...of what's going on, so you have a couple of handouts in front of you. And one is the general flyer about the books that are being read. There's an adult book and a children's book. And the adult book is written by an Iowa author and it's about an Iowa German immigrant family and their experience in Iowa after World War I. And then Glenn, the children's book.
And the children's book is about, it's the true story of Winnie the Pooh. It's about a veterinarian that was from Canada, went over to the war, adopted a bear, gave it to the zoo, and Christopher Robin came and visited, and his dad wrote about it, so...
So those are the books. And there are book clubs, and there are book readings, and there are the public library book clubs, and there are private book clubs, so we're just trying to get, make everybody aware. And the books will be there, of course, after April, but we're trying to recognize everybody in March and April. And there's an Iowa Public Television special, the April 10th, 11th, and 12th, about the Great War, because it's the 100th year anniversary of the U.S. involvement in World War I. And because of the German immigration, we thought, the librarians picked the book and thought it was a great way for everybody to get together. And if you, and you remember, there, we did a, one program on Camp Dodge, there was a painting about, in Flanders Field. And then the other flyer that you have in front of you is about Pippa White, who will be here April 19th. And it tells you the other places in Carroll County that she will be also. But she was here last year, did a one-woman show, and everybody really liked it. And this year, it's St. Soldiers and Spies, Women in the War. So we'll see all, what they were. And I'd like to thank Laverne and Jerry for coming to the Camp Dodge. They get a little gold star.
Very interesting, thank you.
It was interesting, the gentleman from Camp Dodge about Iowa and the involvement in World War I, and Camp Dodge had trained a lot of people.
I had no idea it was that big.
I had no idea it sprung up so fast. Incredible.
The world, yeah. And there's a history magazine downstairs in the library that also features Camp Dodge, and the gentleman that came was featured in that, so you can see that. But unless you have any questions, we just want to thank you for your support of the library, and we want to, wanted to make you aware, and that's what is going on. And it's great to see countywide participation, and it's great to see the awareness going on.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Yep. The first ordinance this evening is the zoning text amendment to the A2 and AP zoning districts, and it is 5:21, and we will open a public hearing. And Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, and counsel. Carroll County and Journey Senior Services have requested that the city consider initiating or conducting a zoning text amendment to the A2 and AP zoning districts in order to facilitate the transfer of the Mallard View facility to Journey Senior Services and approximately seven to eight acres of land. The property is currently zoned A2 agricultural district with the overlay of AP agricultural preserve. The AP overlay requires a minimum of 20-acre lot size. Additionally, the A2 zoning currently does not permit nursing homes in the district. Since Mallard View was built prior to zoning being added to this area, it's permitted to continue as a legal nonconforming. However, as a legal nonconforming, the building would not be able to be expanded, nor could it be rebuilt, it was destroyed by more than 60 percent. So one option would be to look and amend the AP overlay district to allow less than 20 acres for this type of use, and additionally, to allow nursing homes in the A2 district. And the ordinance that's included in the packet would permit this. On February 13th, some history, on February 13th, the council initiated the amendment process and sent it to the Planning and Zoning for Action. On March 8th, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing. Both Carroll County and Journey Senior Services spoke in favor of the request at that public hearing. No other public comments were received at that time. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously did recommend approval of this ordinance to the council at that time. Tonight, the council has asked to hold a public hearing on their request and take action on the proposed ordinance. Notice of the public hearing was published in the Carroll Daily Times Herald on March 17th, 2017, and staff is not aware of any comments received so far before the public hearing. Tonight, staff is recommending the city council introduce and waive the first reading of the attached zoning text amendment ordinance. Additionally, the mayor and council could also consider waiving the second, third readings and move to adoption of the attached ordinance if they so choose. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Mike, are the proposed changes something that you would see suitable, this situation withstanding?
Yes. I mean, I think the AP district itself was a district that not consider commercial or institutional uses. So I think the language that's proposed, notwithstanding this change, is language that seems suitable for the AP in any situation. Additionally, if you look at the uses within the A2 district, there are other institutional uses that you see in there, like schools, churches, and we think this, this is similar and compatible to that. So even withstanding this, I think that it makes sense.
I do, too. Thank you.
We've got no opposition brought to your attention?
None that I'm aware of.
And I see supervisor, any problems that the public's brought to, brought to bear on you guys?
Well, there's a letter there from G. Miners to pay.
Right.
Well, I like the idea that this group of people brought something back to the community that basically the government has taken away with some budget cuts. My one question I have is, is down the road, their program, they discontinue their program. What can that building be used for, then? Is there guidelines set with that, then, too, based off this?
It would have to, I mean, if the use would discontinue, I mean, they would be permitted to conduct any other use within the A2 district. So it could continue as a nursing home or some other type of institutional living like that, other uses like churches, schools, or it could go revert back to agricultural land if they so choose.
Group living, but not apartments.
Current, yeah.
Yeah.
There is a list under A2 of all the potential uses.
There's about 20 different uses.
So it's a lot of variety, plus I think it's important to note that it's served by Carroll Public Water and Sanitary Service Service, too, which is included in your language.
Any questions or statements from the general public audience this evening?
I might speak on, I guess, Ken Snyder, my name, for those of you I haven't had a chance to meet. And my wife Nancy will be the administrator. We'd just like to move forward sooner than later. I think the county would like to close. We would like to get in there. We have contractors that would like to get started. Sooner the better. Needless to say, the, the need is there for a facility like this. Some of you are in the medical field, and you know it. It's almost an epidemic, dementia is, as we speak. So rooms for that are hard to find. We toured one in Council Bluffs this weekend, and, and he's now building another one for the amount of care that's in demand. And we've got some great ideas, some great feedback from the community on different ways to put this together out there. I think it'll be a real asset to Carroll and Carroll County in itself, so... Anyway, that being said, we would hope that you would consider waiving the next hearings so we can move forward and get this, and I do appreciate the expertise Mike has given and some of his counsel, because they've found a way to make all this work, and so hats off to Mike for doing that, and Dave as well. Anyway, thank you.
Any questions? Does anybody have any questions for us, I guess I should ask, and so we'll be the somewhat owners. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny. If there are no comments from the public, it is 5:27, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions or comments from the council? If not, entertain a motion to, we can waive all three readings. I'd move to waive all three readings at this time.
Second.
There's a motion in second to waive all three. Face?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Lechner?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion, uh, second.
There's a motion to adopt. Katz?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Lechner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Face?
Yes.
Thank you. The first resolution this evening is the Carroll Trail Improvements 2017, and it is 5:28, and we'll open a public hearing. And Jack?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, before you is the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate the cost for the two trails, one on the north side, north Fairview, and south side coming off of the Suck Trail up Whitney Street. So both those trails are in this project. The plans include approximately 6,485 linear feet of six-inch-thick concrete, Portland cement concrete, PCC. Path paving, the project includes stripping of the vegetation needed, grading, subgrading, preparation, culvert insulation, backfilling, seeding, the areas that are torn up a little bit. The specifications further detail the construction of the plan improvements. Form of contract is the SUDIS standard form. Opinion and cost, in this I show 744,151, but we did have an item that was not included, and Randy can elaborate a little bit more on this, because it involved the former project connecting the lines, the water lines. The new estimate is 767,800, and that doesn't include, outside the project, there will be work that needs to be done at the railroad crossing of an additional 20,000, and that is the estimate for that. So both projects together, 767,800. There'll be a recommendation that the council pass and approve the resolution adopting the plan specifications, form of contract, and opinion and cost. Any questions with that? Resolutions on the back. The plans are here. Randy and I attended the county board meeting this morning and got permission to be on their land to connect the Suck Trail to Whitney Street. Two members are still here. So Jason Christensen, we met with him last week. He presented the idea and was in favor, and the board approved it today. So we're moving forward. Bid opening, April 11th. So they'll find out the cost, the stretch of the whole trail. Any questions?
Just a quick question. You had mentioned coming up Whitney. I just want to make sure I understood the verbiage, but we're bringing the Sheroes up Whitney. It's the big going down Third Street that you're talking about this way?
Yes, Third Street, and then going north on Carroll Street across it.
Right, okay. So we're not putting this big path up Whitney?
No.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that that was...
Is there any chance of getting the right-to-schools grant for now?
At this point, probably not. We show funding, but there's other trails. If we go north from there, connecting the schools, the high school and middle school, that'll be a proposal to you. There'll be some options to include them down the road. And we did get REIT grants. We'll keep a file for that each year. So there are other grant opportunities out there, so...
With that REIT grant, if you, if you've been using them, they usually will award you the next one around, too.
Yeah.
Correct?
It's not a guarantee, but...
Highly likely that you'll get it again.
Yeah.
Any questions or statements from the public? If not, it is 5:32, and I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions for Jack? Look for a motion to approve the, in adopting the plans, specifications, form of contract, and opinion cost for the Carroll Trails Project 2017. So move? Second.
There's a motion in a second. Seaman?
Yes.
Face?
Yes.
Lechner?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Katz?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our first report this evening is the City Hall Library Project Discussion. And Randy?
I can start this discussion, I guess, last, in the middle of the month. OPN architects forwarded a memorandum regarding the project, and that they had asked or invited questions to be submitted for review by you prior to them being sent to, to OPN. And the intent was for, for you to confirm the questions that you had submitted, forwarded to OPN, and they would plan on being present at the council meeting on April 10th to discuss those questions. So at this point, the questions that have been received are listed in your memorandum, including a question regarding the benefits of value engineering, the project, and then a couple of questions on reduction of the cost from its current estimated, I think the number that you had settled on was 7 million, to 6 and 1/2 million or 6 million. And then another question regarding modifications and associated cost reduction. So those are the ones we had received at City Hall, and they're forwarded for your consideration, and whatever you desire will be forwarded to OPN for, for their review and presentation at your next meeting.
I did the one for the value engineering. I, we're working on some projects over in Ames, as far as that goes, and we're having there, again, the cost of the building is more than what we had, had intended it to be, and where the architect and engineer had it. Any idea with the value engineering is having a contractor look at what maybe they could cost reduce. So we're having that done to a couple of our facilities. And I thought, well, maybe I'll entertain that with them. So that's, that's the question that I had. So if that's something that we can do, maybe, you know, get another opinion to have it, bring that down, because we want it. I think the idea being that we want this to go through as a, as a bond issue, so... I think to get it as, you know, as cost reduced as possible would be of more benefit to getting it to pass. So that was my question I threw out.
Do you foresee, when you bring that up, do you foresee actually having a contractor go into the buildings and look around, or are they just looking at concept A and B or whatever they provided?
They'd be able to do both. What will, they will be able to go in. Actually, these are, this is new construction that we're looking at, so they're going to actually look at the plans.
Right.
And make a determination, well, no, we could use a less expensive baseboard on this, or instead of metal framing, we could do wood framing, that sort of thing.
And the only thing I, the only thing I would add to that is if, if you're going to allow a contractor, a general, to come in, that you possibly do the same thing with your local HVAC, that you let them look at it as well.
Correct.
You know, maybe more than one, maybe a few, so that you get a couple other ideas.
Correct. Sometimes those contractors know something that
Yep.
the architect doesn't know, and to make it a little less expensive, so...
I had one question, kind of to add to this, and it, I did a little research on past votes. I'm going to hand something out to, at least to the council members, anybody else, as long as there's enough here. This is a, I'm going to send those around. I took a look at the voting for the last, I guess I'll call referendum, well, I believe it's the last we had, which was on the Lazy River Vote Project, and this is, this relates to voter turnout. If you take a look at what I, what I researched here, and you can see that only 2% to 3% of voters up to the age of 34 voted, and that's registered voters. There's only 19 people that voted from the age of 18 to 24, 46 between 25 and 34, and then 65 and over, 27% showed up roughly. So with that in mind, it's obvious who's going to be voting on this project. So the question I would have for the architects, and I typed it up just to possibly submit it with this, I'll just read it as I, as I saw it, and if that seems all right to the council, I'd like to put this in. "In a recent referendum vote, the Laser River, registered voters 65 and over were about nine times more likely to cast a vote than voters 34 and under. Keeping this in mind and considering your past experience with library projects, which they have, what can you offer or build into this project that would appeal to the likely voters?" I want to know what they can do for the people that are going to vote. It's pretty obvious who's going to vote. I'd like them to address that at the April 10th meeting. Does anybody have a problem with submitting that as a question?
No, I, I think that they have to, probably, I think it'd be a good idea to keep that in mind.
Well, yeah, if it, if you want it to pass, who's going to vote?
They have to understand where we're coming from.
And that's where I see it, that we're coming from, and if, it's something I'd like added to the list.
And Jerry, I, I think this is good, thank you. That Lazy River goes back to 14, and we did our, we also did our citizen survey through Jeff Schott around the same time. And, you know, that, that would be good to look at also, as far as
It would.
And maybe having OPN look at, at that, because they're
We could point that out to them.
Yeah, I went through it lately, kind of thinking the same as you, but I didn't go to this. And, you know, there was a whole list in there, what do you want? You know, do you want more meeting rooms, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, the amenities? So that 2014 citizen survey, since it is, it does have statistical relevance, that might be a good thing for them to have a copy of also.
I
Because the, the reporting indicates probably the same demographic mix as this.
Right.
You know, age groups, et cetera.
I just feel that they need to address that. If this is something that the public is going to want, it's going to have to be wanted by the people who vote. This shows who votes.
Right.
And so I feel that, that we could add to the
Did you look at the last other elections, too, like the ISL?
This is the only one I looked at, but I think they're
Yeah, they are. I did research on all that. The research on the two ISLs and the two football stadiums are real comparable to this. So I guess I'm a little bit against what you're saying, because
You don't want it submitted to them?
I, well, just for a discussion, I'm not sure if we need to make it for the 65-year and older. Obviously, the, if you look at the football field, the same demographics of people failed it the first time has passed it the second time, or in the same issue. So I don't know if you want to change the concept of a building based on that.
I'm not suggesting changing the concept of this. I just want them to bear in mind who we can expect to vote with, as they address their abilities to, for one thing, to save costs if there is any.
Yeah, I don't mind that. I was just, I thought you were trying to change the concept.
No. No, that wouldn't be my intent at all.
And I did point it out to you, you'd asked me to pull some other numbers, so the 17's on the back.
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's nothing the same percentage.
Yeah. I would have expected that to be a little bit different, but it
Well, if you look at the
They did a really
The younger, the younger groups did turn out.
Well, they did a really hard push on that, though, too.
Yeah.
And I would look for that younger crowd to turn out again to the library, because you're talking about parents of young children. So who use it a lot.
That'd be the people that run the campaign, how hard they push for that.
Yeah, because that's going to be the difference. You know, one that was, is, yeah, with, with rules and requirements, we can't get involved, you know, from the city point, but, you know, so that's, that's probably the biggest discrepancy there, the biggest variation. Do you want to, do you have that question, Randy?
I'll take it. Yeah, I'll get it, too, with that.
Sure.
Okay.
I was the one that threw the, how can the cost be reduced to 6.5, and how can the cost reduce to 6? Simply because we didn't get those type of questions. But I, and so I just kind of posed, is, are those reason, I mean, is that how you want them phrased? Is there a target number? And maybe the reverse is, because I do think this is a true statement, size is going to drive the budget.
Oh, yeah.
And so knowing the, the OPN work, which ties back to the Henlon Wilson work, that the proposal really is within range of a library of our population size, the service area that we serve, the population of the service area we serve, we're, we're pretty much right where we want to be. But that's still a council item to discuss. I mean, if, if, is that the target size you want in the library? Because I don't know if there's finality on that question from the council's perspective. We know, last meeting, what, the trustees and the foundation and where they're at, and I, I think it, they're based, they have the science behind it, but there's still a question for councils, because that will drive the ultimate project cost.
So you're just asking them to, what can they get us for 6 million? What's it going to look like, is what you're
Well, I think the question right now is formed based on concept A. Can you do concept A for 6.5? Can you do concept A for 6?
Okay.
I suspect I know what the answer is, but it's at least how it's posed now. The reverse question is, is concept A, and the council's on the record, yes, that's what we want. But I keep ask, I keep asking the question, because I think that's ultimately what's going to be the driver of the cost of the project.
Well, and I, from what I'm hearing, we have got to get the costs down. And so your questions are good, you targeted the numbers. I've also had people ask me, and that, obviously, you have my emails, you know, mine was the last one. They, people are asking me, well, what can you do to reduce the costs at the bank for City Hall also? So don't just look at the
Just at the library address.
the library, what can you do with both? Because that's a good 30, between 30 and 40%, I don't have the numbers in front of me, of the cost of the project. So, you know, I, I think all the questions are worth their considering, so... But, yeah, I've, I had people say, can't you get it down to 6, 6 and 1/2? What, they're just looking at us to try and get it down. And I know people have talked to me about getting the amount we bond for down, so that we enhance the 60%.
Passage.
Yeah. None of us know the magic number, and I don't know, with all the detail that OPN put, and they hired the engineering firm, I know what you're getting at, Eric. It is so detailed. Yeah, I really was impressed with what they put together. And I thought, I went back again to the, look at those stadium articles on how they progressed through to get that favorable vote. And one of the articles, and Jack, again, you were one of the leaders, in one of the articles, they said they had the architect look at the most expensive elements of the stadium project. Well, what could you do to, to, that we could still have something nice, but could we reduce the costs a little bit, maybe in materials, whatever? I, I don't know, but I think, given the detail in those numbers, I think they should be able to give us some, some help. I hope they can. I, Eric, I have one question for you. With the value engineering, do you have estimates already on the cost of this new construction?
Correct.
Are you bringing, bringing in people early in the process, or are you kind of at the same spot?
We're still, we haven't, you know, we're still early in the process.
Because usually it's done early in the process.
And we're having
Not late.
The contractor, we have six different contractors that we can give the information to and see if what, what they could see in there, where maybe we could cut some of the costs.
So it's not new design work?
No.
It's looking at the
Just looking at material costs.
Because I know sometimes you're looking at functionality. Are, are we meeting all the functions that we want, and are we doing it at a reasonable price? So, but it's the same thing. Are we meeting the function?
Or they may say, the other thing that we were looking at, too, is, well, is a better use of the space?
Yes.
The contractor could tell us that.
Right.
This would be a little bit better use of the space. You've got more over here where you could open this up more, eliminating a couple of walls, which would reduce the cost. So that's what, that's what we're having the contractor look at.
Right. Well, we can throw that out, too.
Yeah. So Mike, with your questions, kind of just to dumb it down a little bit, really what you're saying is, what would we have to sacrifice to get it to 65, and what would we have to sacrifice to get to 6?
And what would we have to sacrifice to get it to six?
What makes this a little difficult, we're not the only players in this game. You know, if we get this down to six million, and the Library Foundation is not for it, we gotta rethink that. They have to be on, they have to be on this board with it, 'cause it's.
They're the ones that take the fall to the next step.
They're gonna beat the streets.
Right.
They're gonna campaign for this, and it makes it difficult for us, 'cause we have to work with them too. It'll be something a little different.
Correct. Any other questions for Randy? Sorry, Randy. Are any other questions to submit to Randy?
Randy mostly did this because I was out of the office last week, so I appreciate him.
So you want questions, okay, sorry. Mike?
Oh, you want.
Poor Randy wrote the memo, so he went off the memo.
So, thank you for.
Sorry, Randy, thank you, though.
You're welcome.
So as I understand it, OPN's coming on the tenth, and is that right?
The next meeting, yeah.
To speak about these questions, and hopefully more of our foundation partners will be here too, and we can have another conversation like we did the last time they were here.
And just also be aware, we had scheduled Amy from RDG to come to that meeting. We're gonna move that, so we don't, it's not, we're not here till midnight.
Okay, sounds good.
One thing I think we need to keep in mind is not to delay our actions or improving this too long, because they've got a campaign to do, and it's gonna be a long, hard campaign. We don't wanna get them to the point they don't have enough time.
Yeah, I don't need to crunch it anymore.
We need to help them out.
Jacob did email me, he, about the topic for this, this evening. And I explained to him, it's just basically questions, is all. There's not gonna be that much as far as discussion of tearing the library down, or building something up, or making something. It's just general questions to submit to OPN. So I think we have a better meeting on Monday, on the tenth, when they come. So, they have some information of what we're looking for. Instead of bombarding them with questions, as they don't have the info, so.
And certainly, it will be a give and take discussion, but
Yeah.
the more we can help them, probably, no doubt.
CJ, do you guys have any questions from the foundation wise, that?
I'm not on the foundation.
They're just library advocates. Very good friends, huh? So, if not, can move on, then, 'cause there's really no action on this one. Anything else, I guess, about the library for now, otherwise? I trust everyone has read the committee reports and monthly activity reports, and thank the staff for continuing their hard work and everything they're doing to get the city running, and keep things going. And, anybody wanna break, or should we just go right to the rec center? Anybody? Jack, you're up, thank you, sir, thanks for waiting.
One little handout. Just put in, I don't know if I quite have it done. This is kind of a quick history of, I don't know how many were there, but there's a few more. You've seen.
Holy cow, Jack, you went to town.
You've seen all this information before.
I said, Jack, Jack has had little information.
Little information.
Thanks, Eric.
There we go. It's a little smaller than what we were hoping for, but again, most of the time you see this information, it's something I provide usually yearly to you. I won't go into great detail, other than the first sheet is expenditures and revenue, and then the deficit. Unfortunately, every year the rec center has been open, it's had a deficit. One, one key thing to notice at the fifteen, sixteen, revenue versus expenses, we've typically been in the mid-seventies to eighties. That number's reducing this year, last year, fifty-eight percent. So our expenses are accelerating faster when we're raising rates. So I think we need to take a look at that. I have in this pamphlet, you'll see our history of rate raises and where we're at, so we'll get to that in a minute. Next page, revenue breakdown of memberships and daily admission. If you remember back in two thousand thirteen, we eliminated the punch cards, and went strictly to all memberships or daily admission, and I'll get into that a little bit further with that, but you can see, memberships have, have rose. Last year's the best year we had, three hundred and one thousand four hundred and eighty of memberships, daily admission, forty-two thousand six sixty-one. Room rentals, that includes the theater, those rooms for parties and different things that we have on weekends. Then the miscellaneous vending machines, locker rentals, just different things that we have that brings that number up. And then the next page, kind of a history, and kinda see how the revenue has gone. So, next page, I won't spend a lot of time unless you have questions. The expenditures. There's the revenue page. Expenditures, up a little bit this year, over the last couple of years. Memberships, you can see how memberships has increased. You know, one of our concerns was, when we had memberships, three or four years ago, we had a six-month membership, a three-month membership, we had a walking membership. We had every membership you could think of. We eliminated them all. We went to either pay a year for PAMP, pre-authorized monthly payment, or you paid month to month. The month to month was significantly up. I think if, we told people, if you are gonna be a member seven months out of the year, you should pay for it over a year. Not exactly where the break, break was. So, really not a problem with what we eliminated. And then this shows history of the rates. Our last rate increase was July of last year. Prior to that was February of two thousand thirteen. Typically, we've do, we've done five percent. And if we're gonna look in the near future of fee increases, maybe look at a ten percent, or a five percent over six months, there'll be some things we need to look at. If you're, if you have a issue with the deficit, if you don't mind having that kind of deficit, then you keep, you know, looking at a five percent raise every year, every couple of years. So that's what that page is. And then behind that is the daily admission. Kinda see how that, that's increased. We raised daily admission a couple of years ago from five dollars adult to eight dollars. So that's reflective of the increase. The next page, you can look into this at your leisure, but that's just basically the fiscal year, more of a breakdown. You can see where our personnel costs are, operation costs and the capital be on that, that sheet through there. And then at the bottom, I did, wanted to show you, if you just take personnel and operations, take out the capital items, kinda where we're at as far as the loss. So you can review that down there at your leisure. I can answer any questions on it. I did put this all together, so I'm very familiar with it.
Jack, quick question. Year to date, what does that go through?
I'm sorry?
Year to date?
Year to date, that was through December. That was half a year. That was half a year.
Why would fourteen, fifteen regular salary be so much lower? Did we have someone?
Yeah, we didn't have the rec center director.
Okay.
We went without the rec center director for about a year and a half.
Okay.
So, that was a lot of it. This year, Kelly retired, we had a few months there. We have a new employee, generally committed eighty percent of what the former person was. So, there's different factors with that, but generally, that was with that. And then the next page is, is basically daily admission, kinda where we're at. Numbers wise, as you can see, it really fluctuates from year to year. Last year was a little bit better year. Our average throughout the year, two hundred and eighty-four. Last year, we were that good, was two thousand thirteen. I won't go into each one, you can see the grasp, you know, in the back of those pages behind. Just wanted to update you guys with this. If you had any questions, again, I think in the very near future, we need to look at membership rates. We've thought of different ideas, staff down there. Right now, you have just your regular memberships, and then for people that wanna take fitness classes, that's an additional charge. So, we're looking at maybe trying to have, or it's a combined membership. I know there's interest from the council to look at joining the Aquatics Center, and the rec center as one membership. Really, right now, we, we just, we have such a low rate at the rec center. Provide, you know, some of the aquatic membership included in that, that's really not feasible, but maybe there's a number we can get to, where it's, just comes out of the same paycheck, or out of the same checks out at the same time. Those are, those things, the only problem you have with that is, someone comes in, if I come in and say I wanna have an Aquatics Center membership, come January, February, March, they're taking that money out. April, May, they decide, oh, I don't wanna do it. And you're gonna refund them that portion, 'cause they didn't use a membership, the Aquatics Center membership. We get a few of those with the golf membership. Now, rec center's really not that, that way. Some of the golf memberships, well, I thought I was gonna be able to play more. I hurt my back, I had knee surgery. So those are things that we're constantly looking at, and I work with Laura and the city staff on refunding or carrying over a membership. So those are things, when you have, adding aquatic center membership, two rec center memberships with one payment over twelve months, your aquatic center membership's only three months. You just can create some questions from families, my kids didn't use it enough. You know, we're sorry, you know, well, can you not take it from September on out? No, if you want the membership, you need to pay for it. So just give me a forewarning, those are some things you really wanna think about if we do that. Okay? Any questions as far as with that?
Members that are out of the city limits pay the same as city limits?
Yes.
Daily past two?
What's that?
Daily past two are not a city limits?
Yes, yep. The only thing we do different is, low-income memberships get to be within the city of Carroll. They retire, they live in the city, or that was established day one, September nineteen seventy-seven, when we opened. And we've carried that out. At the same rate, quarter for a kid, fifty cents for adults per day. So our new software, give you a quick update on that. It's been interesting. We were hoping to be further along in the program. It's progressing, but probably not at a rate that we were hoping for. Laura's had a lot of time working with McKenzie on getting the right reports, just getting a better flow. We had a pretty good flow with the former software program, but that also took quite a while. That was before my time, we did that back in two thousand three, two thousand four, and my understanding was there was some pickups in that, too. So, we're progressing, but it's not at where we want. I know there's interest in bringing on the golf course, I have that interest too. But at this point, we're, we're just working on making sure the memberships are all in there, and are functioning that the rec center are working on. Then we'll bring on the golf course.
Nothing quite so painful is going from being an expert user of your software to a novice, is it, Jack?
Yeah, yeah. And I really haven't had a lot of the time with it. I sat in on some of the discussions when we chose the program. But going forward, I haven't sat in, Laura could probably update you even a little bit better on that end. At least the financial end, I'm pretty up to speed on the memberships and, and that, but as far as the reports, it's been a little bit slower than what we hoped for.
It'll get better.
It'll definitely get better. I still think it was the right choice.
Jack, just to go back to Laverne's question.
Yeah.
Historically, we've had a two-tiered system. So, I don't know, when did that change, that we went from having a non-resident rate?
That was probably two thousand seven, two thousand six, two thousand seven.
I thought when it first opened, I thought they had a resident, a non-resident.
It was resident, non-resident. And then, we got rid of that shortly after I came on, and we did that also at the golf course about three or four years ago. We had resident, non-resident before that. So, city choice to not entertain that. Something we can look at, you know, right now, adult, or senior memberships, college students, you know, pay a little bit less than just an adult membership. If you want, you know, a proposal or something to think about with that, we can bring that up. There's one, I know one of the questions you get asked, I live out of town, but I have a business in town. Can I have the, you know, how do you, how do you wanna answer that one? I know one right off the bat, that.
Yeah, they're paying city taxes, too.
Yeah, so, you're gonna have to take those, we'll get that at the golf course. Aquatic Center? So you see towns that still do that, I don't know what the percentage would be between resident and non-resident. Something we could send out.
I bet you could figure that out in one of your new reports in the new software, Jack.
Sure. Yep.
Jack, I have a question.
Yeah.
We talked before about corporate rates.
Yep.
We have never done that, or have we, maybe in the past?
We did that in the past, and the problem was, you had a company that maybe had five, six hundred employees, and then you have another company that maybe has twenty. They both were getting twenty percent discount. Or, I'm sorry, the one that had maybe five hundred, we get twenty percent, and the one that just had twenty employees would get five percent. They didn't think that was, now, that was eliminated before I was gone, before Laura was here. That just was, they didn't like that tier. So the one thing we've considered is if you have five memberships or more, you get a ten percent. Work at that one.
Do you get any requests at all?
We do, we do. One nice angle, if, if we look at something like that, one of the things I would say is, let's say, we have a business in town, is they do employee deduction, and then we get a check from the business, we get one check, because we don't know if they leave, you know, that company or not, and they could still be getting a discount, unless we follow up monthly, or a couple of times a year, we don't know if that employee's there. So it'd be nice if we worked it, okay, you can get ten percent off your membership, we get a check monthly from, let's say, San Anthony's one that does employee deduction, Farquhar Bachan's another one. So we have four or five, the county, you know, that do some form of it, they're not getting a discount, though. Everyone's paying the same. So yes, I think that's something that, when we bring back this whole picture of memberships, those are some of the things we wanna really think about. Okay, any other questions with that? And the next part that is in your packet was the presentation that we had two weeks ago. Our rec center advisor, our, our aquatics indoor pool committee, one I put together. It wasn't a formal group that the council acted on, but it was definitely one that I tried to include. We had some council members, Carolyn and Misty, as we've, Eric intended maybe some of those, swim team. Swim teams, some of the heavy users, uh, other rec center, Laverne, when he started, was just a user that we included, um, in that when there was discussion of adding on to the indoor pool, um, really looking at that, is that the type of pool we want today? It was built nineteen seventy-seven. I think if you looked at ninety-five percent of pools built in the seventies, it's an L-shaped pool, six lanes and a deep bend. So we were very much, uh, in the norm of pools back then, but we weren't necessarily, uh, a town of eight thousand that had a one point nine million dollar facility or had a sixty thousand square foot facility. I don't think there's many communities that were ahead of the curve like Carroll was at that point. So we, uh, you've heard me preach this, we have a great indoor park, a great facility. Um, in need of updates, which everyone, I think you're all in favor of, it's just a matter of what we're gonna prioritize, what do you wanna see first, um, or where do you want us to put our energy and our efforts to, to begin at the rec center? So this was a presentation that David Schwartz with Water's Edge brought to the group about probably three weeks ago now, maybe three weeks today or Tuesday. Um, good information. This was a proposal we had with him, really started about two years ago. And we started meeting on this. We've updated prices, but some of the themes, some of the things that we wanna do, uh, two years ago is still, um, some of the important things that we had today. So the second page, um, basically the bottom existing facility is what we have today. I won't go into that. Everyone's familiar with that. Um, when asked early on, excuse me, what were some of the, um, goals, objectives of this committee? Um, right off the bat, swim teams, swim clubs. Uh, right now, uh, they use four of the six lanes. We keep our facility open for both members and swim team. There's some communities, if swim teams are, the pool's closed. Um, and then they provide their guard. They basically are renting facility from you. We have never wanted to do that with our members. We wanna have value, uh, to our members. So we try to keep at least two lanes open at all times for the swim teams. Uh, swim team, how many do you have this year, Misty?
Over a hundred.
Over a hundred. Uh, spend as many as a hundred and forty turn away kids because they just don't have enough time, enough room, enough resources to do that. High school swim team numbers, um, thank you very much. Um, their numbers are, are, uh, stay, you know, staying the same, maybe not as high. You see a drop off, um, with the high school swim teams from what, uh, Misty's involved with, with the Carroll swim team. So, um, lanes, big, uh, big addition to there. Uh, moving water for resistance, all the therapeutic needs today, um, the resistant water for knees, feet, uh, joints is just so important. Um, we don't have anything necessarily that people still walk in the pool. Um, doctors are constantly telling their patients, come down and use the rec center in the pool area. So we have that. Um, more usable area for lessons, most of the time during the summer, our swim lessons, we do, those we do in the evening, um, not a lot of problems, but during the school year, during the year, it is, um, we hate to take up more space, but there, there's a need, uh, for us to provide red cross swim lessons, levels one through five, preschool lessons. So those are involved in there. A lot of times we gotta take the shallow area for a while and then we go to the deep bend. Uh, we try to do that at times, you know, that, uh, the pool's open. So, uh, more usable area for lessons, zero depth, easy access. We had that at the outdoor pool, everyone understands that, play area, uh, spray area, those are always fun, small slides, um, spa, steam rooms, sauna. Right now, we have a sauna and a whirlpool. Steam rooms are the thing. Um, people like those. It's a different, there's much difference than the sauna. So, uh, we get a lot of requests for steam rooms. Cool, warm water areas, that would be nice. The pool right now, uh, temperature we're at, swim teams, it's too warm for them, but our morning, uh, water robust class, they, they call if it's down one degree, they know. So, um, we, we keep it warmer, uh, for, for our memberships. Swim team probably would like it colder. Um, use of the existing pool, there's just so many users, there's just so many people using it. Um, it, we just don't have enough, enough space. Um, future offices, support spaces, during swim, swim meets, um, they have stuff all over the deck. It'd be nice to maybe have some of that stored into a room when they're doing results and doing some things. It'd be nice to get away from that. So that's just one thing. Uh, another thing that they like, everyone's seen the current concept. I really won't go into that too much. You've seen it, you, you know, I guess I would ask at this point, are there any questions on the concept that you'd like me to elaborate on again?
The lap lanes, the four lap lanes, what's the depth in those?
Um, four feet.
All the way through?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause I think they're gonna have a walking lanes too.
It is not twenty-five yards.
I know that.
We're short of, yeah.
It's just one of the depth.
When I heard you saying something about, uh, resistance?
Yep.
Water resistance, is that in our new plan? I don't remember that.
That's over in the far bottom left.
That's that far left?
Circle.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. And the zero depth entry is all, uh, walled off, so that can be open hours that we don't have at lifeguard. So parents with young kids, if they wanna come down at nine o'clock, um, to use that area, they can get in that area. They don't need to have a lifeguard.
You're talking splash pad?
Splash pad area, yeah.
Not zero depth?
I'm sorry, but, yes, but that area.
Oh, okay.
Yep. Um, you might still, once a while, have someone in there to kinda watch the area, but they don't have to be, you know, full lifeguard.
So there'd be a wall on that?
Glass wall, yep.
Oh, okay.
Is potentially what we were looking at. Yep. And the steam room, sauna would be in that area. Whirlpool, you could have that in the area that's not lifeguard. We chose not to re, uh, move that. We thought we'd still maybe wanna have that with the lifeguard.
One of the things too, you might wanna just mention was that the new portion of it was of being shallower, um, you could get different guards, but they wouldn't have to be as trainable as the ones that are deep water guards. So you could have some people who do a little less training, um, and be able to guard that shallow water. It may be easier for McKenzie to find people to work that water versus the deep water. So I know that she was excited about that.
And the two big things with that, um, I'm obviously not expert, but it's the distance that you gotta swim. Right now, I think you have to swim three hundred yards for this one, I think is maybe two hundred. The other area, you gotta take a fifteen, ten, fifteen pound brick and have that in the water and tread water in the deep bend, whereas if you're four feet or under a water area, you don't necessarily have to do that. But there's a lot of the other areas that you have to be able to use the backboard. You have to be able to assess the situation similar to the deep bend. So those are two huge areas that maybe people would feel more comfortable guarding in.
Did we also talk about the, the slide that, the tube slide that just made that a straight one? Did we talk about?
Yep. So you don't have to have two guards, one at the top and one at the bottom?
Right.
Maybe lower. Similar to, um, maybe just a slide in a park that you would see, you know, your ten-foot, eleven-foot slide in the park. So, um, yeah. But I still like that option of, you know, a nice bigger slide, but until things change, um, you know, that's gonna be tough on the fill, you know, Jerry was mentioning the lazy river, you know, that was gonna take an additional three guards. And if we had this, that, so it'd be, it'd be tough. Okay. Any other questions with that? Again, that talks about the exist, next page, existing pool. Everyone's familiar with that. Uh, six twenty-five yard lane, one meter board, um, surface area sixty-two, twenty-six. Um, so any questions with that? Some of the new features, we've already discussed, the four twenty-yard lanes, um, zero depth to three feet in the warm pool area, current channel, that in the southwest corner, plunge area for water slide, spray pad, um, in the previous shallow pool area. So, and then there's just some pictures of lane examples, zero depth, current channel that we were talking about, some of the spray examples, uh, I would see if we get, um, this passed, those will be things we'll look at and, you know, bring back and get suggestions to the council. So you'll obviously approve the final plans, specifications on that. Other features, small water slide, climbing wall, very popular today. That was in there, that probably being the deep end, it is something that could be moved, but basically just climb straight up and fall back into the water in the deep end. Basketball goal, of course, we already have the ADA lifts. Uh, we have two down there now, one for the lap lanes, um, and then one for the whirlpool. So, and then there's a water slide example. Next page is a climbing wall, you can see that. So, uh, last page, concept overview. Um, basically existing water surface sixty-two, twenty-six. The proposed new area brings it to ten thousand five hundred sixty-one. Um, the proposed building would be eight thousand twenty-one square feet. Any questions with that? So you gain about forty-three hundred more square feet of water area. Costs, site work, hundred and forty-one thousand. The aquatics, the pool area would be, uh, one million two hundred eight thousand. Building, two thousand ninety, uh, two million ninety thousand. Electrical, a hundred fifteen thousand. So that brings a construction cost of three point five, almost three point six million. And then the overhead, uh, contractor overhead, five hundred thirty-eight thousand. Contingency and, um, fees to the engineer and some of those other things you have in these projects, eight hundred twenty-six thousand. So project cost of four million nine hundred fifty-five thousand. So. Any questions with that? Okay. And then course...
What was gonna be the capacity of that steam room? Do you, six people in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say the sauna now, I think is a capacity of ten.
Ten.
Yeah. I don't think this would be more. So. How, great, how'd you rate a sauna and steam room, one person, for how many?
Oh, I don't know. Like stadium seats, eighteen inches per person that you need. So depending on how many layers you have in there, whatever.
Sure. And, okay. And then the capital project summary, uh, you've seen this, this is something Mike's handed out previously, uh...
And I would note, this is, was the dry, early draft, so there's a, council has a more update, updated copy.
They have more than this one.
Yeah.
This was the one.
This is an older.
Okay. Yep. Thank you. So I, unless there's questions, I won't go into a lot of that. Um, and then you have the rec center design. The new cost estimate, if you do everything with the rec center, uh, it's broke down into sections. If you, um, wanna look at, you had discussions with that. Any questions with that? Then the design on the indoor pool that we just talked about, a better version for you to see and why it was in the project. And then the sauna and whirlpool, uh, or I'm sorry, locker rooms. And do I have some questions for you on that? Um, Carolyn, you'd asked me a couple of weeks ago, um, about trying to reduce some costs and we did, we did get a proposal back from FEH. Um, it just was exactly what we talked about, looking at new flooring, uh, leaving the lockers existing how they look, most likely. Men's would have individual showers, um, making sure the toilets and urinals are ADA, which probably not. The entrance meets ADA qualifications. Um, and looking at same thing in all four lockers, uh, except for the boy side, those lockers are very, they were the first lockers to replace from the original ones, and this was before I got there. And, uh, there's, they weren't very good. So we need to get the similar ones that we have in the men's, uh, women's and the girls. Um, and doing the same thing on the women's side, um, new floor, new lockers, make sure toilets, sinks are all ADA, uh, meet that code, new walls, you know, look at maybe new fixture on the walls. Right now, there's tile that looks, you see on the floor. Uh, maybe they would have some type of door, um, and even with that in the girl's side, um, new floor, lockers would say, look at the sinks, toilets and see how those need to be ADA. And that was thirty-eight hundred dollars. And I met with Mike again this morning when he got back. That is something, you know, he has the authority to sign, but, um, we'll probably bring that back to you at the next, next meeting, um, if I take formal action and approve that contract. So, um, that is one option. But again, um, you're looking at a new pool area, the addition on the east side, the locker or the weight room. I still have people weekly tell me how nice that is. They haven't been in there yet, but we're getting more memberships. We're getting things by having that new fitness room, weight room addition. Um, when we talked about the locker or locker rooms and the restrooms before, we were pretty close, um, to, you know, move forward that. We looked at the toilets and again, at that time, we were all talking, whoa, we don't know if we need ADA requirements for toilets, sinks, showers, what you need to be code on is toilets and sinks. Showers, there's no code, there, you know, for the number of showers per, uh, square feet of your facility. So those are things, um, that in this proposal that we can look at. So I guess what I'm trying to get back to is if you really like the, the plan that you had originally that is in here tonight, you know, think about that. Um, you know, when we talked about it previously, um, cost estimate is around eight hundred, eight hundred thousand. When I talked to FEH a couple of weeks ago, that number didn't ring a bell to him. So, um, we need to maybe, uh, look at that original plan again and say, if this was really like, you really want the individual, the more of the privacy in the, um, locker rooms, you like that setup better, then maybe we do, before we go off and sign this, a contract for thirty-eight hundred dollars, you decide, um, with what you prefer. I mean, for what he's doing, he's already replacing floors. He's, we're, we're looking at new showers in the men's, um, refacing the women's. You're getting pretty close to what you were doing originally. I don't know if there's gonna be that big of savings from what we had originally. So, um, I can ask Rick to update, you know, really, you know, look at that plan that you had before, get a better dollar amount. I probably have that at the next meeting. Um, and then you have that, if you're gonna do the pool addition, maybe add a couple toilets and sinks in that new area because you're gonna be out there a little bit. Um, and if, you know, if there's young kids and families using those areas, maybe you have something a little bit closer than have them come back through and try to go to those areas. So it, it's really your decision. I'm just letting you know that that's still an option to think about. You might not be saving that much money when we all get said and done, we spent thirty-eight hundred on, you know, a reduced, uh, scope of what you were originally looking for. What we originally thought was a pretty good plan for the locker rooms.
So Jack, you're saying this extensive remodeling, they wanna re-look at that and give you a more, a solid number versus they had kind of an estimate?
Yeah, they had an estimate and when I said that to Rick, he, he just didn't know how they got that.
Well, in some of our documents, you said eight hundred thousand and it was, you put in parentheses verbal.
Yeah.
So it was never, so maybe do that first, yeah.
Okay.
Before.
I, yeah. I thought that was a good, good plan. Uh, you know, you didn't necessarily, uh, have a big dividing between the men's and boys, women's and girls, but, um, it was a complete remodel, everything, you know, remodeling the whole locker room, we're, we're kinda piecing it. We're, we're kinda piecing it together if we do the other plan. You might not be saving as much money as we thought.
Well, and we've got an idea of what we're gonna do for the pool area expansion. They could estimate that in to what we would change for the restroom, so we could get the locker rooms done and get those out of the way. Cause I think that, that's a really nice project to get done. And that way they're set up so that we don't have to tear anything apart or add anything if two, three, four years down the road we're adding on the pool part. So you can get the locker room set up all upfront ahead of time.
The east side addition under the gym, being down at the rec center, got no school days, early outs. It's crazy down there. I encourage anyone that hasn't seen what that's like, and most of the time we're doing it with one staff. There's just a lot of kids, and I think that additional gym would be wonderful. So I know a discussion on maybe which was gonna take priority over the pool, locker rooms, or the east end. We really like that east end, we think that's something that you'll see a lot of value for. Especially if there's a way to incorporate a walking track or, it's a little safer area for people to walk in.
Hey Jack, do we have a policy of how young a person can be unattended without a responsible adult?
Eight years old. Eight and older can be in the rec center until eight o'clock. That was established a long time ago, but that's been our current policy.
You know, is that adhered to?
Should be.
Well, the reason I ask is, you know, the comment about the, you know, days that we don't have school and just being a madhouse, and I'm concerned that we're turning it into a daycare facility.
Yeah, you know, I try to remember, I think daycares take kids until ten, and we're eight. Fifteen dollars a month for a membership compared to a hundred and forty dollars when I got paid in a week.
Oh, I completely understand that, but I'm just also concerned about it as well.
Yes.
You're introducing safety issues then after that point. If they're younger than eight, we have to be a little more cautious of that.
New software should, should help with some of that with pictures.
Birthdays.
Yeah.
I can't speak to the eight-year-olds, but I, I know some thirteen-year-olds that get down there on those early outs and really enjoy the activity and playing around.
Do you have any concept in your plans or how to have an entry that they have to go through an area to get scanned with their card or so? Because, you know, you can slip in that building now if it's really busy. You can have people down there that parents think they're down there and they're not down there. Is there any concept you got coming forward for that proposal?
Um, I think some of those things that have been looked at is one, and we would like to do this sooner or later, close off the east end. Don't let, you know, if there's people with handicap needs, that because it's flat, it's easier maybe for some people to walk in the east side. Maybe we do something that they push a button, they scan something, get in on the east side. But yeah, everyone else comes through the west side. In part of Randy's plan, I call Randy's plan, the rec center redo the west side, so it's more ADA, flat or easier access, is that how you'd say it, Randy? Is there any timeframe on that, or is there any? We could do it July one of this year, so. And that would help tremendously, I think that, that's another thing. But, you know, one thing we would like is to have someone, you know, you go out to McFarland Clinic, you walk in, the priority is you're greeted by someone. We don't have that at our facility, Clay, you know, everyone's business pretty much does that, we don't. It's like, come find us, you know? It's not that good. So, but we'd struggle with how we'd accomplish that. We just set a desk, and it's have something, a lot of Y's that you go through. You scan and they have a door, they get you in there, is one of those carousel things that flip, they let you go through that. So, so those are things that we've thought about. We don't have a good designer idea how to do that. We know what we want to do. The other, and then the other thing is, you still need someone after three-thirty and on weekends down at the other desk for the, for the patrons that are there for control and just to watch over. So now you're adding another person that I'm definitely not opposed to. A lot of times we should have two people at the desk. We used to, years ago, we chose to reduce, you know, try to reduce costs and save some money down there. So we've had one person. And again, some of it is just finding enough people to work. Now a lot of people wanna work Saturday morning, eight to two, or two to seven. So if we added down that area which is needed, we'd have to come up with a design, and we, something we can work on.
You know, Jack, one thing I've wondered about a little bit is getting information that shows the people who are there, what are they utilizing? And that's data, it's hindsight, but I'd love to have that right now for, you know, if we're trying to make the decision between, say, pool or additional fitness area, or I shouldn't say fitness, multi-purpose room, right?
Yeah.
I'd love to see that data, and I'm wondering with the new software that we have and some of the capabilities we've talked about with, say, twenty-four hour weight room accessibility, could we perhaps put, implement into the rec center some sort of a pass where, you know, I come in with my five-year-old and we go swim, where we, we let you know that not only are we here, but we're going into the pool to swim, you know? Maybe we go into that locker room door, it scans our card and we know we're in there. Or we go use the weight room so that we can perform better analytics on where is our usage? Is it in the gym? Is it in the pool? Is it, where is it? Where are the people going once they're in there? And it's just a what-if that I wanted to throw out there.
If, if we maybe looked, you know, did over like a six-month period, have a lifeguard count, or have someone count the pool every hour? Because I might be going to workout, use the treadmill and that, but I wanna go sit in the sauna to sweat after that. So I'd use both facilities. Or I might go shoe baskets with my son, daughter, you know, after our workout. So a lot of times they're multi-using, multitasking the rec center for those. But some of that might be, have a clicker to determine from three to four, the pool. Typically, we can kinda tell you it's gonna be swim team, twelve, fourteen, sixteen. And then there's probably ten to twelve kids that come in after school that use the pool area. And then the gym, you have forty to fifty. And then, you know, five o'clock, you start getting some of the walkers in the pool, that starts picking up. You have swim team, you know, those swim teams come in, maybe parents walk in, water walking, lap swimming in the pool as their kids are in there. So those numbers pick up, and really the pool until nine o'clock. Until eight, it's from four to five to eight, it's really busy. The pool area, gym might be three-thirty to seven. But, you know, and then after seven, it's probably more in the pool than in the, you know, fitness room. It's, it's, it's busy all the time. Early morning, I'll go work out at five-thirty, I can't get a treadmill, you know, with the TVs anymore. But I'm not beating the traffic, you know? So those are good problems to have, so. But yeah, let's, I'll, I'll try to do something in the next, well, we'll do two months of trying to count per hour, kind of where we're at and number wise. We'll be perfect, but that's probably the best way to.
Well, I'm certainly not pushing you for that. It was simply a question that I had was, was some of the things we already have in place, how can we measure that?
Yeah.
Well, Clay, that actually begs a question, and Chief Rec, you might build a way in on this a little bit. When it comes to safety and security of a building, if there's a fire and we have to evacuate, somebody has to say, everybody's out and accounted for. Is that a true statement?
That's, that's a good policy to have, yes.
So if we don't know how many people are in there, I mean, if we think we've got a good count, but if we have a little bit of control measure problems, if we have people in different areas, how do we ever know that? And, and how much liability do we assume if we don't know that information?
Right. Yeah, well, we might have a situation down at the, at the rec center, we need to involve the police. You know, what time do the kid leave? We really don't know for sure. You know, and Dave, Dave and I have had this conversation, once they leave the rec, you know, even though, you know, mom and dad might think and say, hey Cody, you need to stay at the rec, you can't go over to a restaurant and eat, you need to stay there. We can't, you know, control that. We, you know, but we're, we're pretty good, we can tell when people leave. Luckily, we have staff that's been with us long enough, they know the kids, they know the users, greet them, see them when they leave. So they have a generally good idea, but yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of area down there, sixty thousand square feet. One, on weekends, we just have one person a lot of times working. Swim meet, some of the different larger events, hoop it up, we try to get two.
Well, and to be sure, I mean, you've got one person at control desk, you've got more lifeguards.
Lifeguards, yeah, yeah, we always have two. Two guards, yeah.
I need protocols to check all the areas to make sure they're all clear anyway, too, so. But, I mean, that's a good point, Mike, though, and at least you get out, hey, there was a hundred people out here. Yeah, that's about what we had counted an hour ago, so.
We'll all be crying pretty hard over the one kid.
Yeah.
And luckily, I've, you know, we have the cameras now, they're not perfect, they don't catch everything. They're not, you know, the top of the line. But when the police has been involved, they've been able to look at them and determine different things. So they're, they're good, we'll add more if we do twenty-four hours. There still might be some that we add going forward too, but I think we got a lot of that area covered. Okay, what can, anything else? Thing you'd like to see in the next ninety days?
I just have a quick question, the thirty-eight hundred dollars that you talked about before with the locker rooms, is that just, is that just asking them to give you a renovation plan, like a, a lower-cost renovation plan? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, so the original plan that you have there was new lockers, new, you know, new everything, where this was just, you know, the cost for new flooring, determine what kind of flooring we should have, individual showers, you know, the men's have the pool.
Yeah, well, and I, I think we looked at that, and I think there were a lot of nice features about what they had done, but there was also some features that I don't think everybody agreed upon, like certain carpet on the floor. And, you know, like those kinds of things in a wet area. I mean, I think they could maybe revisit that and possibly change some of that to bring it down.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there were questions about how it was set up and the, how there could be kids who were stuck back in corners, possibly getting bullied because of all the nooks and crannies. So maybe they just need to relook at that, and I don't think we want carpet in the bathroom. And I don't know about nooks and crannies in the bathroom. But I think, yeah, your new tile and, and better, you know, a few more toilets and sinks and whatever you were talking about, the showers for the men's, and absolutely.
New walls.
New tile.
I think they like the setup of the women's showers now, but they, they're, they're hard to maintain. I mean, they're forty-five years old now.
I think you find when you try to do a small renovation, a lot of times it ends up being just as expensive as doing a renovation.
You mentioned the lockers.
Lockers, they, they're all less than twelve years, cause I'm in here twelve. We've replaced three of the four. I think those, the boy's side was right before I, I think we did the women's first, and the men's and the girls.
You mentioned the twenty-five cent admission fees.
Yep.
And you keep track of that, they have to apply for that, correct?
Yes, basically they qualify for the reduced school lunch program, they'll qualify.
And they qualify for that, and then that twenty-five cents, I know you mentioned some miscellaneous income, is that where that?
No, that'd be under the memberships. Our software shows, the old one, it had admission, adult, admission youth, low, low income. Yeah, so it, yeah, that was in. Probably have four hundred individuals are qualified for that. Most of it's kids, and that's the right place for them to be. Chief will do the first one and say it's good to have the kids in the rec center.
Right.
Jack, could you tell us a little bit about the maintenance, cleaning upkeep regimen that's utilized at the rec center?
Sure. Uh, right now we have a full-time person, Bob Lambert. He comes in about three forty-five, cause we like to have him go through just to double check locker rooms. Just there's no additional problems from him. They have nighttime cleaning, they go through, but he'll come in, do one other quick swipe through before we open at five fifteen. He does the hallways, goes into the gym, does that area. So we have a full-time person that kinda revisits everything. And then we have nighttime cleaning, they generally come in about nine o'clock. We have them six hours a night, or five nights. We've really struggled, we, we worked through a employment agency, was working real well, but then we just had turnover, and there was probably about six months we had two nights covered. So our staff was trying to pick up some other nights up. We're back, almost back to full staff Monday, Tuesday nights, we don't have someone there at night, but every other night. They're great, hard workers. They typically come in and clean down weight machines, and then the locker rooms is really their main focus. And then they empty all the trash cans, they got all the trash throughout the building. Pretty much, because it's one person, and to clean the floors, we have a machine, those take over an hour to do each side. So it's not probably where we wanna be, we probably need some more help. We chose, two years ago, we eliminated a morning time to try to reduce costs. But we've done some feelers to try to get some people, maybe, we had someone that came in seven to nine, seven to ten, washed down windows, just did odds and ends that maybe some of the staff couldn't get to throughout the day. We had Andy, or you know, Bob, or Larry, and then we had Andy. Andy oversees Bob, but we have Andy doing so much throughout the city. He's an electrician. The time that, the amount of time he spends at rec center is very low. We utilize him, Public Works uses him quite a bit. He does a lot of things for the police, he finds sirens, checking on those. So when we first opened, we basically had two people designated full-time, and now we have one and a third. Or Andy does about a third of his days at the rec. Generally, those are the bigger projects. Right now, we're working on making the facility wifi throughout the building, where, you know, fifty people now can be on the wifi in the weight room, where before it's five or ten. So he's been working on things like that. I don't know if that gave you enough information, but there's just a lot, a lot to clean and a lot to keep up with. Again, those floors, you could clean them till you're blue in the face, and they still are forty-five years old. They're not gonna shine like our floors in our houses and those different locations, you just can't get it. So hopefully when we update the fixtures and the improvements, you'll see they'll look a lot better. Thank you. Yeah.
I asked, at one point I asked Jack to contact retailers in town, cause they always have the gold standard. We should make their tile, tile floors look like that retailer, I won't call them out. But what, what do they spend on private contractors?
I'd say it was ten thousand a month.
We stopped looking at that option.
We asked the company to come in and do a one-time floor to ceiling, McKinsey called the company to do a floor to ceiling cleaning, one time, one night, five, five thousand.
You know, nineteen ninety-five, you can get those swirling mops off TV.
So cleaning is, it, it's a, it's expensive and it's a, it's a struggle.
In previous, I, you know, I'm down there every, you know, every day. But then in, in the weight room, you know, that's one area we had complaints that the weights were dirty. And that's why we put a lot of focus into that. We used to use wipes where, put, you pull a wipe down, similar if you go to a retail store now and wipe down your machine. Well, those are just getting so expensive. We're spending about four thousand a year just in those wipes. And typically, um, there's enough time in between when I'm working on, when Carolyn goes, that she'll grab that one, that's dry. You gotta grab two or three and throw them away before you get a wet one. So we went to towels and hand sprays. This is something we saw at the Y. Um, maybe a thousand dollars a year now, um, not even. But it's tough. People, not everyone does it. So try to remind people to wipe down the machines and that, then try to help out. We even had people say, you know, the treadmills, the, where it goes like this. We have a mop right there, so you can spray, just hold it there and clean it. So we bring staff in. So we're trying to make it easier, quicker to clean than what we had in the past, but it's, uh, it's hard.
I guess that's something to think forward to if we're going to be expanding how we manage the square footage.
Yeah. We could use more staff, but we're trying to do everything we can and, uh, what we got. We got a great staff, happy with, with who we have and they'll work hard and.
Anything else for Jack?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think, uh, the rec center's been a real bargain for me. I go there almost at least every other day. But I just wondered, my waters could be set for some donors, even more donors, donate like, like the silent with Mr. Allen. Years ago, that was expanded.
Yeah.
Sure. Honestly, we have to do all these things at once or it could be a matter of five, six years.
It's, uh, it's really up to the council what they want to do. Obviously, yeah, you can structure it where you do, you do a ten-year plan, a twenty-year plan. I don't think that's the intention. This plan obviously, you know, started digging dirt tomorrow.
That's a lot. I give all these plans away here.
Meet your needs.
If you develop, they will come, I suppose, you know?
Sure.
More, I think, be a lot more, work out, but we'll just want it anytime. But I just, we can almost, I don't know, I don't know, I don't think we're up.
Sure.
That's open, you know? Much money we got, we'll go out there on the library, the rec center. If we get some private donors, these rich people, especially, that's cool. I know we donate a lot, of people like that.
Yeah, I think there's a, we have a rec center foundation, I think, Dan.
Yes.
So there, people, yeah, people can donate to that foundation.
Hospital donation foundation, foundation, Swan Lake, fences all over, anything like that.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council or staff?
Hey McKenzie, they've been here tonight. The Iowa Parks Work Conference, uh, started today, so she is over there. Too much to do. Uh, one nice thing is we're going to be the host for the fall conference, uh, this fall. We had it last in two thousand and one, I believe. So I have seventy, eighty people, uh, in the Iowa Parks Rec here for three days, you know, two nights, three days.
Do you mean at the rec center?
Uh, we'll be at the hotel.
Hotel.
We'll have a conference. I haven't mentioned him yet. Maybe we get him to welcome everyone. So we're, we're working on that.
Thanks, Jack.
You betcha. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
If nothing else, then I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second. Flusher?
Yes.
Pass?
Yes.
Steven, you have Sturks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Thank you.